Five thirty-five, I'm gonna officially start this Environmental and Sustainability Committee meeting of the City Council at five thirty-six P M. So, um, I'm opening the floor. We are here to talk about the possibility of a solar farm on Allen Street. I want to thank Councilor Allen for being here, Councilor Walsh, and I'm not sure if that's a counselor up there. Um, I'm Councilor Goland, and I want to thank the community especially for being here. Thank you so much for being here and for being interested in our city. So, who wants to go first? Right, so keep doing that. Okay, there you go.
Well, I'd like to get a status of the program.
So, I'm not sure how much you know, Councilor Walsh.
Well, I don't know if I should. I'll just go take the fifth on that.
Um, but I feel like it's an evolving thing, right? So, they're proposing, Stop and Shop, I believe, was proposing a solar farm. We had some conversations, someone had some conversations, I think Scans did, with Next Grid, who were the developers of the solar farm. And we were trying to convince them not to cut down every tree on that lot because we know trees are so important. And we want trees, and we also want solar, right? So, we want to try to find a compromise. Um, is anyone from Scans here? Here's Scans, right? Jay here is from Scans. Hi. Um, I'm not sure, did I, uh, did I say that right, Ellen?
Yeah, Scans.
Okay, and well then-
Oh, you made a description of the project, yes.
Do you want to any, um, add anything to it?
No, I'm also here to listen and learn and show my support and just be here for y'all.
And again, I thank you all for doing that. And Vern, hi Vern, Mana's here.
Hi, Data. The only thing I would add is we really would like to see them put up the solar panels over the parking lot instead of cutting down trees.
Yes.
It makes no sense to cut down trees.
Like how they did it at Smith and Wesson.
Yeah, and I think we've been talking to them about that. And I don't know if anyone had any news because, um, when, that's the reason we put this meeting together because I think there were some developments. Um, Mana, I know that you had said you had a presentation you might be able to share with us.
Yes, um, can I screen share?
I think you can, you can try.
Okay, so let me just pull up the page first. And yep, it's on here, and I need to go back to Zoom and screen share. Let me try that. Okay. Can you see this screen?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a YouTube video clip, and it's about, um, three minutes and forty-five seconds. But I think this is really important information from Professor Meritas at Tufts University, and his name is William Mumau. And he's a climate scientist, and he's, um, you know, uh, well-known for natural climate solution, and, uh, he, he won Nobel Peace Award or something. I, that's briefly what I heard around nine-minute mark. But anyway, he gave this really, really fascinating presentation, and he just talks a lot about why it is so important to preserve mature trees. And even though people might sometimes think, oh, you know, if you cut down a big tree, you can just plant new trees. Uh, actually, it doesn't work that way. So, this explains why, and I'm gonna play it, okay? So hopefully you can hear it. Let me just, um...
Okay.
And I published this paper with two colleagues, Susan Vassino and Ed Fason. And, um, uh, growing forests to reach their potential for carbon accumulation, wood and soils in the absence of harvesting, is an alternative to planting. Planting trees is a wonderful thing to do, but little trees don't have much carbon in them. It is the currently growing, middle-aged and older forests that are removing all this carbon dioxide. So, growing forests to reach their potential for carbon accumulation is the goal. And cutting old trees, we often hear young trees grow faster than old trees. Well, it's, it, 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 middle tree, aged trees grow faster than old trees. Younger trees really don't, if they're really tiny, first ten, twenty, thirty years. Um, but if we cut down this big tree and replaced it with younger trees, those trees would never catch up in, let's say, the, 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 uh, the, the time, let's say this tree was, was harvested, and we planted little trees and looked at them at, at the age of this tree, which is probably a hundred and seventy years. In other words, they could never catch up, uh, to where this tree is. And yes, it's gonna die someday. And you can just see these arrows pointing to the size of this tree and this tree. That's a, that's a little young tree. This is a big old tree. And here's a young forest, and here's an old forest. And that's me standing next to this magnificent, uh, enormous old tree out here in Western Massachusetts. And we looked at this whole question about do little trees really do better than big trees? And, um, this was with Bob Leverett. We did these studies, this study together. And this is a stand of, 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 at, at age fifty, it had about thirty-eight trees in it. And it had about, um, uh, forty-five, um, tons of carbon in that stand of trees. And in a hundred years, um, uh, there were fewer trees. But the amount in the stand was greater. It was up here at fifty. So we've gone from, from, uh, maybe a little over twenty to fifty. Um, and we only went from zero to a little over twenty here, and we increased even more in the second fifty-year period, and still more in the third fifty-year period, even though there were fewer trees. There is natural selection that thins and so on. So this is just showing that these older forests are not only holding more carbon, they are removing more carbon every year. And to put it in, in, uh, in, in starker terms, again, Bob Leverett put this together, it's really great. This is a hundred and fifty-year-old big red oak, hundred feet tall, fifty-four inches in diameter. And so, somebody's cut, says they're gonna cut it down, but don't worry, we're gonna plant another tree, or two trees, or three trees. But how many trees does it take to get the amount of tree you had here? That is, the total amount of living biomass and wood, and therefore carbon. Because wood is fifty percent carbon by weight. And it turns out the trees you might plant are these large landscape trees that are twenty-five feet tall and four inches in diameter, ten years old. It would take four hundred and sixty-five of those to equal this one tree that you cut down. No one planted four hundred and sixty-five trees to replace this one. And this is doing trees near half as tall, and so need thirty-five of them to equal that one.
So that was it. I thought that was fascinating and very important information to share. So just wanted to, um, and it, it was from the webinar that was, uh, you know, sponsored and hosted by Senator Ed Markey. And I have the YouTube link, so anybody who is interested, um, just email me and I can send you the whole, um, presentation. And, um, basically, they were talking about how it is getting more and more common to see this kind of, um, inappropriate sighting of large solar projects across Massachusetts. And, um, there are some case studies done, and, um, especially the last one in this presentation that was taking place in Dorchester, but that was strikingly similar to, uh, what we are experiencing right now. So just wanted to mention that. And his presentation, Mr. Mumau's, uh, presentation starts around nine-minute mark. So if you just, you know, fast forward to nine minutes, you can just see his presentation. And there were a few others from MIT and, you know, uh, renowned scientists and even lawyers talking about this. So just wanted to mention.
Thank you for sharing that, Mana. Um, and as I was watching that, I was thinking that we're preaching to the choir, kind of, right? Because I think we're all in agreement that trees are absolutely necessary and that we need to make, keep them for as long as possible. Um, so that's why I think we're here. Um, does anyone have any information on, um, the, the solar farm and what's happening? Has anyone talked to Next Grid? No?
Not yet, but I'm actually thinking of sharing the, um, you know, report, um, you know, my summary and also the entire report from Dave Longyards of Re Green Springfield with Daniel Cerber of Next Grid, who came to, um, talk at the, um, Outer Belt Civic Association meeting. Maybe it was at the end of May. And around that time, you know, like I was trying to search down the meetings that, you know, had the, you know, someone from Next Grid because I wanted to know more about it. I just heard the rumor, but I never was able to find the meeting, you know, I could attend where I can actually talk to people from Next Grid. And, you know, there was some information posted online correctly. So like my neighbor and friend Janine and I and my husband showed up for nothing, and nobody was there, and it was really elusive, I don't know why, but, you know, it was very unclear when it was discussed and when that was happening and where. Um, and so we started, you know, distributing the flyers at the beginning of June and everything. But, uh, yeah, so that's, it, it was very, uh, interesting. But by the time I got to the first opportunity to speak with, uh, people from Next Grid, it was actually the end of May, and I was already told it was a done deal. And, you know, and I, after started distributing these flyers among the residents, I was astonished. It was, uh, shortly afterwards. So at the beginning of June, fifty percent of the residents had no idea that this was happening. So, and they were already tell, telling us it was a done deal. So I was like, what's happening here? Right? So like, something is really wrong, and residents need to know because we are directly impacted in terms of health. My husband has asthma, and, you know, Springfield is known as asthma city. We didn't know that when we purchased the house, obviously, but, uh, you know, I'm learning more and more about this. And, you know, this city is known for high rate of asthma, and I'm just trying to get the statistics of asthma rate right now, uh, reaching out to several different people. So I hope to get it, um, by the next speak-out opportunity, but that's where I'm at. So, um, I'm thinking of, I have his contact info, I have his direct phone number and direct email, so I'm thinking of sending the information to Daniel.
Um, and when you do that, if you could just ask him where they are in the process, maybe, right?
Sure, yeah, and, uh, back in, back in June, like they, I asked them where they are, and they said like, we are in the final stage of purchasing the land, which is closing. And but I didn't, I didn't have any opportunity to speak to them or like voice my opinion before that. So, you know, like, um, it was rather shocking, to say the least, because I was trying to find it, and other people are also trying to find it. And, you know, they couldn't, you know, and that was the first opportunity, and it was a done deal. So, um, anyway, thank you.
Um, so, Councilor Allen, did you have something?
Yeah, I have, uh, some reports to give here. And things I tried to do to make this, uh, meeting be as productive as it could be. So, I called Walter Gould to invite him to the meeting. Wasn't able to make it, but I had conversations with him. Uh, one or two conversations. Um, they're still where they were. They supported it from the Outer Belt Civic Association standpoint.
You know, for- They supported, they supported the, the solar farm, or they supported opposition?
Supported the solar farm.
And can we, one person speaking at a time, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Allen.
So, and the thought process there is they've been living in fear of a Walmart, um, Costco kind of operation going in there, or apartments. There was inquiries about apartments. So, um, you know, a couple of years ago, and nothing's gone forward. But, uh, from their standpoint, just representing their point of view since then, the meeting. That, you know, all those other things would be, in their mind, worse because of traffic and other impacts to the land, et cetera. So I called Walter. He can't come. He might come in two weeks when we have that, uh, the ordinance meeting, urban woodlands ordinance meeting. So, um, that's our report on that. Then I called Dan Delaney, who Mana was just referring to. And I couldn't reach him because I thought they should be in this meeting. Um, if, if we're having, talking about their project potentially, they should be in the meeting. And it was a late call. I didn't call until today, maybe three or four hours ago. I didn't get him, and, uh, so I'll follow up with him, just so they're in the loop. But the other person I called, I was disappointed that he couldn't come, and that was Alex Sherman. So, I talked to Tom Ash and Alex, and they're gonna both be at the meeting in two weeks, October fifteenth, so that's good. Uh, but I said, Tom, there's some things I think that might come up tonight. So he said, would you email Alex some questions? So if you don't mind, I'll read you the email-
Please.
And, and the reply. So, um, basically said, Alex, have you experience with this tool? The tool that Dave Longyards used? Yes, I'm very familiar with iTree and have been using it to quantify tree benefits for many years. That might, kind of a redundant question, are you familiar with it? Yes, I have personally used many of the soft, software options provided in the suite. That's beyond me, but it's, obviously, he's familiar. Do you have a similar tool? iTree is a free software developed by the U S Forest Service and Davi Resource Group. It's free and open for public use. Is this a good strategy? My question, is this a good strategy? He said, iTree is currently the most accurate model of tree benefits available. Next question, number five. Will we, will we be using a tool like this to measure the impact of a tree canopy in Springfield? It's probably a little longer. The forestry division's tree inventory system is proprietary software owned by Davi Resource Group and has the same free tree benefits model built in. We often refer to this to estimate tree benefits for Springfield's public tree resource. We also use iTree directly. Number six, there's seven or eight questions. What did the tool say about the trees that would have to be taken down for the solar array? Reports show that around seventy-eight percent of the parcel is covered by true tree canopy. The most relevant contributor to global climate change evaluated is stored carbon. The report shows that the tree canopy on the site sequesters twelve-point-seven tons of carbon annually, which according to the EPA is equivalent to eleven gasoline-powered vehicles driven for one year. The trees also store three-hundred-and-sixty-five tons of carbon as biomass. There are also a number of other co-benefits shown to be provided by the trees, including air pollution benefits and hydrological benefits related to storm water management. Next question, seven. Do they have a lot of value for Springfield to fight off the negative impacts of climate change? And, and the answer, all trees contribute to the reduction of greenhouse gases and, and climate solutions. Monetarily, the trees contribute just under six thousand dollars annually in environmental benefits assessed. It's important to note that there are other benefits to open space and tree, tree landscapes, including wildlife and other ecosystem services not accounted for in the iTree analysis. Other important metrics would be tree size and type, tree size and type that could further characterize the benefits of the open space beyond the iTree analysis, but this type of data would be more costly to assess. That's it. I hope this information is helpful. I apologize, I should not be able to attend this open house at my daughter's school tonight. So, but they did say they'd be able to come on the fifteenth. So I thought, I thought that was pretty good info that, uh, that you sent along.
Yeah, I think, and, and thank you so much for doing that, um, Councilor Allen, um, for sending Alex the questions. I knew that Alex wasn't going to be able to be here tonight because he did tell me that he was going to his daughter's school. Um, but I'm glad that we got his, um, input to, to a degree. So, um, so at this point, I guess, the solar farm, um, we, just like you, Mana, were surprised when we found out that this was happening. The City Council didn't know about it. So, from my understanding, the state of Massachusetts, um, basically gives, I hate to say this, but free rein to solar farms. If you're gonna put up a solar farm, all you gotta do is do it, right? There are some permits, but you don't have to go through any, um, City Council approval or anything like that. Not even, um, D P W or, um, the Planning Department needed to approve it. They could just get their permit from the state, I imagine, and put it up because of, you know, the carbon, um, you know, uh, rate that we're trying to get to, which is, I want to be net zero, but maybe in my grandchildren's, um, grandchildren's age, that will happen. But, um, so that's where we're at, and I don't know, again, we don't know about, you know, um, having them not put the solar farm up. I'm hoping that maybe, um, with our input and our, um, reaching out to them, they might be willing to consider some options. Um, but again, that's, I think, behind us, and, and there's not much we can do about that. But going forward, which is what prompted me and Scans, um, to talk about Urban Woodlands Ordinance, right? So that in the future, we can prevent this from happening because we see all the benefits from trees. Mana, uh, the city of Springfield now, I believe, is number three as the asthma rate capital of the country. Um, we were number one for a very long time. Um, so I feel like we should give Alex some credit, right, for keeping trees up and planting more trees, and for us doing some of the work that we've been doing. Um, so we are number three, so we need to make sure that we keep our trees, especially our mature trees up. Um, Mana sent me a, uh, a picture about somebody's, uh, cutting down their tree in their yard, right? And that's just one big tree. And I don't know about people's residences, you know, they, I feel like if they want to cut trees down in their yard, that's up to them. But when it's a big property like that, because that's when it really matters, right? Um, and when I think of that, I think about how, you know, everybody's saying, okay, you have to recycle and you have to do this, but the big corporations aren't really doing anything about climate change, right? Not to the extent that I think we're expect, individuals are expected to do. So this is kind of like what I liken it to. So us trying to prevent, you know, uh, uh, forests from being knocked down in our city is what we need to focus on. And I'm hoping that we will be successful in, in getting this woodland ordinance, um, passed so that we won't have to be here again, maybe next year or the year after, for the same thing.
Yes, I'm all for it.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, go ahead, Dave.
Um, I was looking, and I found Springfield Tree Regulations. And there is, there's, you know, a bunch of it's about, you know, public, you know, trees on public land and things like that. But there is one regulation of significant trees that are- trees. I'm wondering how, how is that implemented in Springfield, like who?
So that's Alex Sherman's department.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess for, you know, it's, it's like you said, if it's one thing, if it's like, you know, I have a big oak tree in my yard, I want to cut it down, you know, or it's, because it talks about that, you know, if the tree is dying, it's gonna fall, you know, there's that. But in, in a place like this where there's a lot with, I don't know how many trees, right, thousands?
Right.
Does somebody have to like walk the property and-
Right.
Say, okay, out of the two thousand trees here, there's fifty that are big, and they need to each be-
Right, they would have to determine that.
Yeah.
Probably Alex's department is the one that would do that.
And I'm wondering, because it does talk about permitting and-
Yeah.
All of that. The city does say the city forester, but I'm just, was, was the, basically, my question is, is process fault?
Right, right, in that case.
And they get the permit to build the-
Can I speak? Can I speak, can I speak to that? Um, because we, we've been talking about that in Scans. So what, what we have already, and we had, was the Significant Tree Ordinance, which is just for individual trees. And like you say, it just, it saves one tree and, and many, and the trees have to be of, in, you know, certain species, legacy species, et cetera. So it's not really anything, it's not at all a woodlands-type law, which is based on a group of trees. And so, the Significant Tree, that's a, that's an old, you know, we need, we need new laws that have to do with mitigation of climate change, and that's not one of them. Now, as far as what the Forestry Department did, they, they re, they did some new legislation, but it's only for public trees. And I asked them and begged them to see themselves as at least advisors about the private sector trees in our, uh, in our city, because, because the public sector trees in our city are very, are very small parts of all the trees. So the woodlands, the woodlands laws would have to apply, the new Woodlands Ordinance would have to apply to private sector as well as public sector. And because otherwise, it wouldn't be effective at all, you know?
But it sounds like the city has a lot of discretion, then. I mean, this doesn't say anything about species. It doesn't say, it just, it's-
The diameter of the tree, right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the forester has some discretion then in terms of issuing-
Yes, it's, it goes by species, and, um, if you look from town to town, they all have, that's an older, that's an older type of legislation for, uh, tree legislation. It only counts for saving individual trees. So you're exactly right. It, it would, it would be very, it would be impossible to take that kind of legislation and make it do what we're trying to do.
Right, so we're gonna go to Jay and then to Vern.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, just a couple of topics I, I want to hit here. The first one, just regarding the, the rights of developers to make solar farms, as I understand it, um, what specifically occurs is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts says, if you want to be eligible for green funding and green initiative funding from the state, which is something obviously Springfield wants for climate resiliency, tree plantings, things like that, then, then you need to, um, basically allow solar by right, which basically means that it can be built in any district, right? It does, it's not, not just spot zoning in industrial or commercial.
Right.
Um, that's the reason why they can buy a private lot, you know, next to residential homes and, um, you know, pursue this. Um, and so, you know, obviously, you know, there's still some type of permitting, you know, involved in this, you know, building permits and all sorts of other types of structural permits. But when we talk about notifications, generally in any municipality, the way in which, you know, um, residents learn about issues, either by being informed, you know, being involved in government, or if they have proximity to it, if a special permit or a variance is triggered, and they live within an area that says the city has to mail you something about this, right? Um, when you don't have one of those requirements, which we don't have in this city as it relates to solar, you can pursue a project, um, without ever having to write a letter to, you know, any neighbors to say, hey, we're letting you know ahead of time that we're gonna do this, and there's gonna be a hearing. So that's one thing I think we can look into long term. Um, the second piece regarding the project itself, and I hope that Councilor Allen will keep me honest. But, but a couple of things I believe I know are that, um, the closing is complete. Next Grid owns the land. And that Next Grid has obtained all their necessary municipal and/or state permits. And, um, my understanding is that because of timing, they don't anticipate starting work this year. Um, but they would start at some point next year. And, and I don't know the right time to build a solar farm, if it's in the spring or if it's, or things like that. But my understanding is that if they wanted to start tomorrow, you know, other than coordinating with the city for traffic and things like that, they could.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is an interesting development, and I can't say that I know exactly how to thread the needle here, but, um, Next Grid could move forward. But we also know that, um, Stop and Shop is closing. Now, that doesn't mean the whole plaza is getting sold or, or anything like that. Um, but it, it does mean our perspective, Stop and Shop is not really part of this conversation anymore. It's, it's the city, it's Next Grid, it's the owner of the plaza, which, um, I have to apologize, I don't know who owns it, if it's like a real estate investment trust or Stop and Shop or some corporation, but there could be a conversation to be had, and I think that's worth discussing. Um, and, um, the, the only other piece I wanted to mention on the Significant Tree Ordinance, and, and this is my own personal understanding. I do believe that the forester has the ability, you know, if, if there was a tree on private property that was a significant tree, as defined by the- to say that it couldn't be cut down.
Right.
But, but I do believe, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Sherman, what we don't have right now as a process in this city or, or resources is to say, um, your intention is to cut down seven or ten acres of trees. We're gonna take forestry officials, um, and canvass this entire lot and flag the, say, seventy-five, um, trees that are significant on the parcel, and we're gonna have a discussion. And we similarly don't have a process that says, if you want to pursue this project, you have to show us plans that flag all the significant trees, which is something that other municipalities require for developments.
Hmm.
Um, and so I think all of that is helpful. I, um, only some of it maybe speaks to what we might be able to do on this specific issue. But I, I think it, um, it speaks to a lot of what we want to accomplish for the future. There's just other one thing, Madam Chairman, when I want to say. Um, I know we're talking a lot about the environment. I just do want to mention, because I agree with Mana, despite all her efforts, probably the typical resident doesn't know about this. I do think there's going to be a real shock and awe moment when a thousand feet of trees along Allen Street are clear-cut.
Yeah.
And, and something that folks have, have, you know, probably grown used to over a hundred years is suddenly gone. I, I just think the character of the neighborhood is gonna change in a very significant way. I, I did have that conversation, you know, could you consider leaving a vegetative buffer along Allen Street? So that if you were gonna do this, could you at least hide it in- So that if you were gonna do this, could you at least hide it in a better way? And reasonably stated by them, you know, if you have trees near solar farms, they're gonna cast shadows. And those shadows impact the ability of that farm, excuse me, solar array. Because we're trying not to use the phrase solar farm anymore, but solar array. That, that has an impact on them. So that's what I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very, very informative. Vern?
Yeah, two things I'm thinking of. One, if this is a done deal. Then we should milk it for whatever it's worth to raise awareness about what the costs of doing this are. Publicly, so people are aware and it becomes a bigger issue. For example, it seems to me there should be a way to measure the net benefit or the net cost. If you take the amount of. Carbon savings that the solar panels would produce. And subtract from that the amount of solar, amount of carbon that would have been absorbed. By the trees or get released when the trees are cut and removed. That's a different way of looking at it. That, that will show, I think, the net gain much smaller than what you think it would be. So, so things like that, and I mean, if we can do something like that and also highlight the other. The other pieces, not necessarily in a struggle against Next Grid, but as a way of raising awareness. Among residents and politicians and others that might be able to raise a voice. The second thing is, I'm not sure what the previous gentleman, whose name I don't remember, was saying, but. If there is some way, if Next Grid were offered an alternative site. I remember they were at a meeting in your committee Zeta several months ago. And the spokesman that was at your meeting then seemed, you know, more open. To the idea of not having to cut down trees. I, I don't know if there's. Any way that the sale of Stop and Shop property. You know, would open up the possibility of doing something on the parking lot there, but.
Yeah. Those are good points, and I love if maybe Springfield Climate Justice Coalition and maybe scans could somehow. Partner or come up with some sort of publicity. Thing that with the city council could share, the city council could promote it somehow, because I'd definitely be willing to do that and, and, you know. Like a one fact sheet or something, I don't know, but I totally agree with you, Vern. We do need to. Publicize it and let people know what's happening. Because I imagine the cost of that solar, those tree, that urban forest in that neighborhood coming down. People are gonna feel the effects in their air, I feel, you know, because they're used to breathing that fresh air from those. Trees and now they're gonna be gone. So that's, that's a good point. Ms. Ellen?
Hi, thank you so much. Vern, I agree with you completely. I, you know. Tim Allen, I really enjoy, Counselor Allen, excuse me, I really enjoy how you framed it, right? I think the neighbors have some concerns around large scale developments, so short of any Costco going in there. Of course, I think we would much prefer solar, right? And then I think we would much prefer not to cut down trees if we didn't have to, right? So there's several sort of layers here of problem solving, I think we can get to. And then ultimately, if it is already a done deal and they are putting solar in there, you know, just from a personal standpoint. As a resident, I, you know. I would just look to the long term to see then what level are they gonna clear cut? How much of that lot will be gone? You know, do we set future rules on future solar developments to say like? Well, if you're gonna put this in, you can only cut down fifty percent of trees, and if you plant fifty percent more, you know, like. Maybe just developing long term rules. So that's sort of why I'm here. I have an interest more in the urban tree canopy. And just trying to figure out like what lessons we're learning from these dealings with them. Solar, right, because it's not gonna go away. So the better we can get at handling these kinds of, you know, working with developers, setting rules, making sure they follow. You know, I think folks just want to do the right thing when given the chance. So if they are going through with it, to me, solar is better than Costco in the neighborhood. And then how can we capitalize on making some long term? Rules and regulations that future projects might have to adhere to that are beneficial and based on all of this incredible data we've been gathering.
Right. Thank you, Ellen. That's very, very good. Somebody else, Mana, I see your hand. And does somebody else have their hand raised? Oh, Ellen, go ahead, go ahead, Mana.
Thank you. So, yes, according to the summary findings from page eight of iTree Analysis Tree Report. There were many things that were written there, and of course it didn't cover everything, like, you know, wild animals and habitat and everything. But one thing that really like particularly stood out, you know, to my eyes was the tree canopy contributes to a reduction of. Hundred thirty-seven point three five thousand gallons of runoff annually. And, you know, I actually, so I bought a house back in December, but we didn't know about this, you know. But we actually had water issue in our garage from the springtime because there was so much rainfall. And, you know, damage is, you know, pretty extensive and the repair cost isn't cheap and the insurance company usually doesn't cover. So like, I don't know what kind of plan Next Grid has to. Address this issue because if they build it and then they say, oh, like it too bad, we already built it, but then all the houses around it. Start having water issue like that, and you know, who would pay for the cost and, you know, so what's gonna happen? That's my question.
Yeah, those are good questions. And Mana, did you say that you have Next Grid's? The, I forgot the guy's name. Do you have his contact information?
Yes, I have direct phone number and email address.
Would you be willing maybe to coordinate a meeting with maybe me, you and him? And I don't know if anyone else might be interested in joining from the council or even from scans, maybe just to have a conversation, right?
Yes, sure.
That we talked, is that something that you could do?
Yeah, sure. And you know, like, to us, like the garage program, we didn't see much because like we saw the water puddle on the floor. But it turned out like the repair cost could be fifteen thousand dollars. And it won't be covered by insurance, you know, even though it's rainwater, it won't be covered by insurance. I just wanted to let people know in case people are not aware, like, you know, we are already having this. And what the, you know, water retention program gets first, of course, trees are gone, the roots are gone, nothing to hold the water. So those, those water, that amount of water needs to go somewhere. And where would it, would it go? People speak.
As we've just seen in real time.
Exactly, right down there in, in, yeah, North Carolina. So Dave Bloneyard's report, I think, was amazing. And I'm wondering if we could do some type of a traveling show and, and go around maybe to different neighborhood councils or different community meetings? And maybe put that report out there, because we've seen it, and again, I think feel like this is preaching to the choir. Because we know it's important, but having the people in the community know so that they could be aware. Of what's going on and, and, you know, the work that's being done. I think that might, that's something that I, I just thought about, and I think maybe we can talk about how we can make that happen.
Yes, definitely. I think that's a really, really important piece because I've been, you know. This summer, you know, of course, like we just moved in December, but this summer, like we've seen so many mature huge trees, like, you know, hundred foot tall trees cut down. And those are healthy trees. And, you know, if people hadn't known what the trees are doing, they might have made a different decision. But, you know, lots of people think, oh, it's just standing there doing nothing and we can just plant new trees. It doesn't work that way. And I think it starts, awareness starts from education and opening people's eyes to the fact that trees are doing so much more. And I think this iTree analysis result shows all that. And, yeah, just like you said, I was thinking of asking Dave Bloneyard if he's willing to come to civic association meetings around the town. And then just, you know, give short presentation to the residents so that they can understand more about this issue.
I think that'd be a great idea. Okay, so I think today we've done what we could do. Dave, last word.
This, this summer, you know, the DOE R was, there's, there's accepting comments on changing the Massachusetts solar program. It is smart is the solar, I can't remember exactly what it stands for, but whatever. And I'm not sure exactly where that stands. I know the comment period kind of ended at the end of August. So I think they're updating all the regulations.
Okay.
But it sounds like this project is, you know, kind of ahead of the.
Right. It's, yeah.
This, you know, but anyway, it's just something to be aware of.
Okay.
And I don't know, again, kind of exactly where it stands, but it's worth checking into. I can send you the.
Okay, that'd be great.
With at least what the proposals were and all of, all of that and kind of the, you know, what, what the trade offs. But this, this issue of. You know, what they call green field solar is something that was definitely. Part of the conversation.
Right, right, right.
And trying to, basically, right now, there's already incentives to build on parking lots or rooftops. But they're not enough to offset, you know, it's still cheaper, it's still cheaper to cut down trees.
Right.
So I think the new proposal is to try to make it even stronger incentives to put it on the top parking lots and. Further discourage green field development.
That would make sense, yeah, I would like that.
You know, again, this one may have, you know, it made it before the deadline, I guess, before those changes.
Yeah, yeah, like.
Because this, you know, Springfield is not the only place in Massachusetts where the conversations are happening.
Yeah, yeah, which is good.
Yes, just three quick things, Zeta, please. Thanks. All I remember on this significant tree thing, besides what people already said. Is that Alex found, relative to Crystal Brook Drive. And the development there, or West Crystal Brook, one of them, I think it was Crystal Brook. There was one significant tree. And I don't know what the, whether it was taken down or not. But there was only one in Alex's analysis, that's what I recall. So, secondly, the permits are in or they've gotten the permits they need, doesn't mean they're gonna use them. It just means they got them. So the biomass permits were in. And fourteen years ago, and there's still no biomass.
SCJC.
So, yeah. Yeah, Walter Gould said to me today, of course, they've been, he, he's the chairman or the president of the school association. He's an active guy. He constantly is talking to different people about different things. And he said he's talked to, I swear what he told me today is he talked to Dan Delaney from that company. And then they're giving, and they're giving some four acres back or something. So when you guys were talking about the, the margin or the border, you know, not.
Yeah.
Building on the border, or keeping the borders so you can't see. I, I gotta follow up with that, but I thought he said the trade back.
Is he from Next Grid? Dan Delaney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I could get to that, Madam Chairwoman. So what Sir Gould might have been referring to, Counselor Allen, is that towards the western side of the property. There, there's conservation land, you know, there's, there's wetlands and things like that. And so there's a portion of it that was, is just not developable. And I think there was some thought expressed publicly at the time. That first of all, that part's not gonna be developed, it can't be. But secondly, long term, Next Grid, you know, does not need to own it. And perhaps there could be a conversation. Where, you know, another entity, perhaps the, the city or a land trust or something else could potentially own it. And, and that should be on the table as well in these discussions. Because, you know, certainly.
So that must be it.
Yeah.
But if we are able to get a conversation with them.
So we're gonna have a meeting, so Mana's gonna help us set that up and Counselor Allen, if you want to join anybody from scans or SCJC, we'll let you know. And I think this is an ongoing conversation that we're gonna continue to keep having. The wood, the woodland, Urban Woodlands Ordinance is going to be, continued to be worked on. I really, got really excited at our last council meeting when Alex and the Parks Department talked about the grant that they got. And possibly doing something with the urban ordinance, the woodland's ordinance. So I think we can make progress and we can make our city better, continue to make our city better for all the residents. And this is what we're doing here. So I'm really glad. Thank you all for coming again, for being here.
I'd like to say, Counselor Govan, thank you for having this meeting and getting this information out.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and hopefully we'll spread the word. Maybe we'll go on a, a traveling show and, and tell everybody about it.
I'll make the flyer.
Excellent.
Good night, everyone.